Hi, I'm not Jeff Thielman. I'm Kirsty Austin, Vice Chairman of the School Committee, and I welcome you to our meeting of, our regular meeting of Thursday, February 8th, 2018. Mr. Thielman is stuck on the red line. We expect him at some point during the evening, I don't know when. In the meantime, we'll begin and just continue until he gets here. So I'd like, we've already discussed the art, so I'll begin with public participation. Can Elena Jacobiak? Okay, please come.
Okay.
You sit at the microphone. So you have three minutes to...
I feel I'm in trial.
You have to speak into the mic.
Just so that people can hear you on TV.
Right.
You're on TV.
You're on TV.
No pressure.
Okay, no pressure.
MSNBC, you know.
So I'm a parent from the Bishop community, and I want to talk to you today to consider addressing enrollment issues that have fallen through the cracks. During the discussion of the Thompson and Hardy additions, Bishop was occasionally referred to as the third child of enrollment issues, not pressing enough to address, but always of concern. This year's first grade cohort started as three kindergartens of 23 students each, which soon increased to 24, and by the start of first grade had grown to class sizes of 25 and 26. We're fortunate to have received one of the five district-wide large-class size TAs to be shared across the three classes, but as Bishop's cohorts historically increased in the lower grades, it's likely these class sizes could reach 27. When my fourth grader was younger and also in a large cohort, I asked about teaching support in classes of 25 and was told on multiple occasions that there should be support for younger grades with sizes 24 and over, but that there isn't a proper guideline. This lack of clarity of proposed solution that isn't implemented leaves parents confused and upset. We're led to believe there should be support, but are we now supposed to fight for the support? Without a guideline, there's always something more pressing, requiring funding, something for which there already is a guideline. As the budgeting for the coming year is finalizing, we're asking the school committee to consider such guidelines and consider the flexibility and allocation of resources to ensure that the large cohorts get the teaching support they need without parents having to fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Miller?
Paula does, I'm a little less polished than that. That was very nice. So, my daughter attends Bishop, and she attends the aftercare at Bright Start, and they have, they don't have a lock on the door after hours, which is, you know, it could be a concern, right? And so, they have safety drills and things like that that I didn't see when I was a kid, and there's a reason for that. And so, I understand that this has been under consideration for the budget for a number of years, and I think it's really important to consider that there's a timeframe, and if you miss the window and something happens, it's really bad. So, I just wanted to make sure that it's not lost for another year, and that's all I have. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of our public participation. At this point, Mr. Spiegel is going to talk to us about the GIC.
Okay, thank you. So, this will be quick because you probably all have seen in the news, I mean, the GIC a few weeks ago announced major changes to the carriers that would be offered to its members. They were going to eliminate Tufts, Harvard Pilgrim, and Fallon, and then after a lot of feedback and meetings that they held, they voted last Thursday, February 1st, to reconsider that vote, and they reconsidered the vote, and...
Nope, sorry, sorry.
Time's up.
So Tufts, Harvard Pilgrim, and Fallon are still in, there's no changes for this coming year, beginning July 18, to the plans offered by the GIC. So, they're maintaining all those carriers now, will have access to them, to those carriers. There's a couple more, on, this past Tuesday, they met and they voted on the plan design, and they approved the plan design. I don't think there's any major changes. And then on Thursday, February 22nd, the GIC is meeting again to vote on the rates, so how much they will charge for GIC, and that informs how much we pay in Arlington and all the other towns and state employees who are in the GIC. And, so that's it. I mean, I think it was, there was a lot of outcry when they announced the changes, a lot of the unions were involved, a lot of our teachers, I think, went to Boston to attend that meeting, so I think that helped, they heard from a lot of people.
Do we have, we as a school department or a municipality, any input on the rate changes and stuff?
So I think...
Is this a public hearing they're having?
I think they're a public body.
Right, that's how they got in trouble the last time, making a decision without...
Yeah.
I guess, the Chapter 70 money is, one of the major issues has been increases in health benefits the municipalities have had to pay without getting some sort of help from the state. I guess, I'm concerned about it going up and having an effect on our budget and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what we're anticipating in terms of premium increases. They may be, I don't know, I hesitate to speak to what they could be until we see, because there could be a few percentage point increase, I don't know, but we will have to address that when it happens, but we're sort of locked into the percentages our employees pay.
I realize that, but, okay, we'll wait, find out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No. Okay, and up next is the superintendent's proposed FY '19 budget in discussion.
Thank you. And this is the culmination of a lot of work we have been doing over the last few months, and I expect that we're going to have more discussion and perhaps some possible adjustments to this. But I don't get too many opportunities to read out loud the mission of the Arlington Public Schools, so I'm going to take this opportunity, because it actually, when you reread it, you do see that it is really aligned with the work that we are doing. The mission of the Arlington Public Schools is to educate students by promoting academic excellence, by empowering students to achieve their maximum potential, and by preparing students for responsible participation in an ever-changing world. The Arlington Public Schools are committed to helping every student achieve emotional, social, vocational, and academic success. And it is this mission that drives the work that we are doing. It is a, along with the goals that the school committee have worked several years ago to develop, become the, sort of the guiding principles for what we do with our budget each year. Budget priorities, a lot of discussion over the last couple of months about this. Certainly, one of the most important things that we will be doing is the retention and compensation of faculty and staff. This evening, I'm just going to talk about the general budget priorities, but then John Denizio is going to get, is going to go through all of the numbers associated with each of these. But this is a very important part, I think that I can say with great pride that we have a wonderful staff, and that one of the things that happens every year when we create a new budget, there are changes both in terms of COLA, step in lane, and, which is, in a, in a school department's budget, teachers can go up different steps each year until they reach a maximum number of steps, and then they increase the number of degrees they have, or courses that they take, they can also go into a different lane, which is a column. So, that is a major part of our budget. Enrollment growth and class size mitigation is another goal of this budget, and in doing that, we have proposed 5.4 full-time equivalents, FTEs, for the high school. The original ask by the high school was 7.8, and this is, this is an area of the budget where we have been just sort of making do for the last several years, but we're now at a point at the high school where there's a need not only for core, more sections of core classes due to enrollment growth, but more elective courses as well. Now, how that is distributed among the various disciplines depends upon the course selection process. Pretty much all of our staffing is student-driven in terms of choices of classes, and that process will begin very soon. At the Addison Middle School, we're proposing 4.0 FTEs. This is to create a full, another cluster, actually, to change a half cluster at the seventh grade to a full cluster, which will require three teachers, because one of the teachers is going to move to the Gibbs program, Gibbs School, I should say. It also includes .2 for world language and .8 for specials, because when you create another cluster, you have to create more sections of different specials, art, music, facts, PE, and so forth. At the elementary level, we are proposing 3.0 FTE reserve teachers. Right now, we already know that one teacher is going to probably need to go to bracket because we are graduating three classes and will be most likely entering four, and given the latest census data we have, I think that's pretty accurate. So we already know that one will probably need to be at bracket. And then, in terms of program improvement, we've talked quite a bit about this first one, and I'm sure we're going to have some more discussion about this tonight, and that is full-time TAs at the kindergarten level. Addition to that for program improvement is that we are proposing a 1.0 FTE literacy coach at the elementary level. That was a part of our discussion at the last meeting as a, as an ask, and that is something that's been needed for a number of years. I've wanted, and as well as administration, has wanted to include that, because as, in order to support our teachers in the classroom, right now, the coaching that we have for literacy is very, very thin. So, another category is the support for our high-need students, and this will involve additional funding for out-of-district tuition, for special education transportation, for special education services, and an additional 4.0 elementary teacher assistance. They are most likely going to be used in support of students on an IEP, and then a 1.0 social worker at Thompson. Other additions to the budget will be additional funding for course reimbursement. For a number of years, we had a number which is proven to be totally inadequate for the number of teachers that are seeking to take more courses, seeking other degrees. In fact, I would say that we've almost tripled in the last year or so, the number of requests for course reimbursement. We know, as you know, we need to have a designated budget for translation services. The custodian here is part of a memorandum of agreement. So then there's also additional funding for facility operations utilities. That number has been flat for a number of years, and rightly so. Mr. Denizio has pointed out that we really need to actually identify that this is actually in need, rather than trying to find additional funds as we go through the year. And then, of course, is the full implementation of the Gibbs School, which is $1.3 million in our budget. So, those are the funding priorities. Right now, it's based on the revenue that had been identified, we'll go through that, but just in the last week, we've learned that the governor's budget would give Arlington roughly about $240,000 more in Chapter 8 support than we currently, currently have in the, in the plan. So there was discussion, long-range planning, and I think John will talk a little bit about that. So, there are areas clearly that we probably need more, that we need to shore up, and one of them, as I mentioned already in public participation, I think that we don't have any reserved positions in general for large-class TAs, that's one area. Another area, another, is that we are almost for sure going to need another preschool classroom next year, and that is not in the budget. And should that happen, we were going to have to do some adjustments in order to be able to accommodate that, and when you open another preschool classroom, there's going to be a teacher and probably, certainly at least one, but probably more like two teaching assistants. There's also the possibility that we may need to increase programs in some, in one of our special programs at Stratton. That is not as firm as the preschool, but we'll probably have a much better idea. Again, that's not currently in the, in the budget. So I'm going to ask John if he would go through the numbers here and also the budget development process.
So we just want to talk a little bit about, you know, what we've done so far and how we got here. So, what we have on the screen there is just a little bit of the budget process up to date, which starts in the fall when we start talking to the leadership team, you know, right after school starts, you start talking about next year's budget. It's good timing. And we get some feedback on the leadership team and talk with the superintendent about what the priorities are, and you really get the conversation started. Shortly after that, we began meeting with the school committee's budget subcommittee to talk about the same and to talk about budget presentation and the budget book and some changes that we're looking to make there. That goes on through November, the leadership team meetings and budget subcommittee meetings. In December, you got to hear from the, from the principals of both the secondary level and the elementary level, got to come in and give an update on what their needs are and a three-year plan from the elementary principals, and also got to hear from the AEA and AAA about what they see the needs being. In December, we also had our first meeting with the Long Range Planning Committee, where it starts to get our first look at what the target for our budget is this year, based on the formula that the town uses to fund the school department. And that's based on a growth factor for enrollment, a growth factor for regular general ed, and an increased growth factor for special ed. In January, the superintendent starts to share the first numbers of the budget estimates, and this fine tuning goes along throughout January. The school committee also gets a chance to accept or acknowledge the town manager's number from the Long Range Planning Committee, and then that brings us to today, where the superintendent's proposed budget gets first presentation for the school committee. And all the while going through that process, we were able to get feedback from school committee, from parent groups, from school committee's meeting with PTOs. There's a lot of feedback that goes into it now, and it doesn't stop tonight, that happens right up until the school committee takes a final vote on their budget. And what is the budget? This slide just kind of shows you what the anticipated revenues and the funding sources are for both this current year and next year. And the funding sources for a school budget are really made up by three pieces, the town appropriation, which is, which is what the Long Range Planning Committee and the town manager, and then eventually town meeting, finance committee and town meeting vote on. The second, the second funding source is grants, both state and federal, and the third is revolving accounts or reimbursements, which is user fees or reimbursement, is the circuit breaker reimbursement from the state for special ed, out-of-district or in-district services that are beyond a certain level, you get reimbursed at a certain rate. So you can see there that the current year's FY '18 budget was $66,876,000, and you can see the numbers that made up that budget. For the FY '19 anticipated revenues, you'll see that it's $71,785,000, of which $65,860,000 is the town appropriation, and that represents an eight-point, just under an 8.1 percent increase from the previous year. It's important to note that that would be, that would be just below 6 percent increase if we weren't opening the Gibbs, first year of the Gibbs, and needed a one-time influx of $1.3 million. That $65 million also makes up just under 92 percent of our total budget for next year, with the grants making up just over three, and the revolving and reimbursements making up just under five. So altogether, the budget growth year over year would be 7.34 percent increase or $4.9 million. Again, if that were, if we weren't taking into account Gibbs, that would go down to a 5.4 percent increase year over year, or a $3.6 million growth. Out of that 4.4, $4.9 million, what are we spending it on? The superintendent had hit on these in a little bit more detail, but sort of broad categories is, the Gibbs is 1.3 million. Staff retention and contract is just under $2 million. Fixed and mandated costs are the special ed cost, the transportation costs, and the cost for the position that was added from the MOU. And then the rest is, the rest, what you have there, the just over a million dollars, that has to cover everything else, including enrollment growth and class size mitigation, which takes up a big chunk of that. It looked a lot better on my screen, but, that's just kind of a visual of the three buckets we talked about earlier. You can see the big, it was supposed to be the Arlington color, but it doesn't come out as good there, of $68 million, you can see that. One thing to point out is that the Chapter 70 that the town gets specifically for the school department is, you know, about 18 percent of that. So, it's, you know, $11.5 million out of $65 million. It's not just a... The next slide breaks the $71 million ask for next year into the major categories that we talk about. I don't know if you can see it great, but, just, as you can see, the big slices are, elementary ed, secondary ed, and special ed, just as you'd expect, are big chunks, with smaller ones for curriculum instruction, that would be professional development, things like that. Administration, and other, which is transportation, facilities, technology, pretty much everything that's not, you know, teaching and learning. Next graphic's just similar, but it's, instead of a one-year, it's a multi-year look, and as you can see, the three big ones we've talked about, you can see they've got a pretty good, steady growth over those years. You know, it's, the special ed one specifically is pretty telling. Next slide is just to point out, just a, is the, just to point out what the spending per pupil is for our comparable communities. By comparable communities, we have a, the town manager, 12 they're called, it's 12 districts that, that the town has considered their peers and how they compare to them in many different benchmark areas, you know, all throughout the town. So as you can see, Arlington's right in the middle, getting a, you know, getting a great value for, for their education that we're providing. These are 2016 numbers, because the 2017 numbers don't come out till later this spring, because everybody has to get their reports audited, and another point that these are, these are actually in-district numbers, because of the dashboard where I got the benchmark data, it doesn't include out-of-district, but the only change, if you were to include the out-of-district, if I looked them up separately, the only changes is the North Endover and Melrose swap spots, and Belmont moves ahead of Winchester right behind us. Everybody else stays in the same spot and grows by around the same amount. What's next for us is we'll, we'll continue to, we'll continue to get feedback tonight and after this. And today, we were, we shared both online with the school committee, and it's also attached to the school committee's agenda, and shared with the finance committee, the budget schedules, which makes up a little bit more of the detail, rather than the higher level stuff we talk about in the presentations. I'll go over that a little bit in the next slide, but, so, after tonight, the next, the next chance for, at a school committee meeting to be heard is at March 2nd, I mean, March 1st, which is the public hearing for the school committee, similar to tonight, it will be a chance for, for feedback from the public and the school committee, and then on March 15th, the school committee take, takes a final vote on the school committee's approved budget that goes to both the FinCom and then to town meeting. The FinCom is, I think, a week or so after we take our vote, and town meeting is at the end of April. I just wanted to include the link, you can't see it, but it's on the, just wanted to include so no one of you will see it. It's on the, it's, it's on the town's website, it's on the school's website, and it's also on, attached to the agenda for tonight, and we're going to, we can share the link. The budget schedules that I was talking about, that are, that are online, is a similar format to last year, it includes the budget message as usual, and then you may notice that there's less, a few less sections than there, than there has been. It's one of the changes that the budget subcommittee was working on, gone down from 14 sections to eight or nine. There's still, sections that are still included is the funding summary, which outlines the sources, sources of our funding, sort of like the slide did, where does the money come from and how much of it? The budget transfer summary, which breaks down the, the total funds into the categories that the school committee has voted out of the major categories that they're, that they control the budget in. There's a schedule on the program summary, which includes a four-year spending history of the total budget, broken down by program. A program is a learning area or a department, or something like, you know, English, math, science. The following schedule is a budget detail report, which, exactly what it says, it's the total budget broken down by cost center, which, cost center, then program, and then object. So cost center could be a school, so high school, Addison, those would all be cost centers, or it could also be a department, such as math, or, or ELA, or science, or history, and those would be district-wide departments. So it wouldn't be the math from the high school, it would be district-wide math, sort of handled by the department head. The next report is Position Control, which is broken down in the same way by, by cost center, then by program, and then by object code, and that is the listing of all the current positions, their FTE and their salary, and it just includes the current positions for this year. Next report is, is, is two reports that were merged into one, it's both special ed and interventions, and broken down the same way. The last report is athletics, similar report, athletics is broken down by sport. And, that's it.
Going back to our per-pupil expenditure, is that derived by taking the total budget and dividing by the student population?
Well, it's, it's...
Or is it more complicated?
It's a little more complicated, it's based off of what you submit to the DESE on your end-of-year report. So the end-of-year report has to be done by every school department, it has to include all funds spent on the school department. For instance, health insurance that might not be in a school department's budget, that's still included. It includes a portion of town departments that, that...
Support the schools.
That support the schools, for instance, purchasing, or comptroller's office who cuts the checks, or treasurers who collect money, or legal. So there's an allocation from those departments for every town, and then that's divided by what DESE has for your, your student FTE throughout the And then that's divided by what DESE has for your, your student FTE throughout the year. So it takes in, it does take into account changes from October, January, and March.
So it's not, it's not that magic number on October first?
It's not. It's just another set of enrollment numbers to confuse people.
Thank you.
I have a question. So the salary unit costs, we've, we've seen different numbers over the last few years and I know you're new to us. What is the fifty-five thousand based on? Is it based on a average over a certain number of years, new teachers?
It's based, it's based on a, a, an average of masters three.
Okay.
And that was talked about by, at the budget subcommittee, based on some, some.
We feel that that's.
Details of, of the last few years hiring, actual hiring.
So, so one of my worries is that the last few years, we focused very heavily on elementary school hiring as we needed, as the enrollment surge happened, and our next push is going to be on, um, secondary school hiring. And I wonder if those numbers will look higher then. So just a, just a worry.
It, it depends on what the subject is. Um, yes, that's a valid issue. I, I think that, um, the, well, it was, the hope is that the average will come in there. You're going to have some people that are going to certainly be higher and others that are going to be perhaps at a, a masters one.
Yeah, so just, I mean, I, so a greater percentage of our teachers will be at that secondary level potentially in the next few years, you know, or potentially even this year. So it's just, that was just my concern, yeah.
This was discussed at the budget subcommittee and, and wanting to lower that number. Um, and it's, it's true that I think that all things being equal, if someone is just coming into profession and has great recommendations, and oftentimes they're people that have already been here in the system, that they've, they've worked as an, as a student teacher or a long-term substitute or a teaching assistant, um, but they're, they've had experience, but they are just beginning their career.
Right, right.
So looking at the last couple of years, I think that, um, John felt comfortable with going with that number as an average, but you never know.
Got it.
It depends on what, what, when we get to the spring.
Right.
The positions we're going to be having to hire for.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a, a few things, so I'll take one at a time and see if somebody else wants to interrupt. First, the, um, the website link you have works, but the actual, if you go to the page independently, it's not appearing on that page.
Okay.
Where our budget materials are.
Yep.
So we can fix that, so, so we can direct people to it without the actual link. Um, the custodian that we're adding, um, I realize that was a result of some negotiations, but isn't, is that replacing some contractual services and will we have savings there or what is that replacing?
So it is, it is not gonna, it's not gonna replace any contractual services here. It's adding back, it, it was the agreement when they were able to transfer people to other schools that, that would be added back during this, during this next fiscal year. And it isn't going to replace any contractual services here in this building and, but may somewhere else, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I will.
Can you go on? The, um, uh, I mean, at some point, Kirsty, we should talk about, um, Kirsty, how we're going to deal with the additional funding, uh, whether we're going, whether we're going to want to see a revised budget or wait until the, you know, house ways and means number comes out because that might be higher?
I think we should have Mr. Denise go talk about what was talked about with the extra funding first so that everyone knows what we're.
You're talking about the two hundred and forty thousand?
Correct, that, that Dr. Bodie referenced.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I, I, I think it would be prudent to wait to find out what that number is before we earmark specific to it, but I, but we do know that what Dr. Bodie had talked about, the special needs, um, the new, uh, program at the preschool plus at, possibly at Stratton, that I think we would, would, those would be first.
We didn't talk about where the money's coming from. I mean, just laying out for the public that.
Oh, I thought, I thought we identified that chapter seventy came in.
Yeah, we were talking.
Well.
But it doesn't normally flow through to us.
Right.
Anyway, we'll.
It flows into the town pot, it doesn't come here.
So the chapter seventy numbers in the governor's budget.
Right.
Came in three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars more, uh, more than last year, which happened to be two hundred and forty thousand dollars more than what the increase was in the long-range plan that the town uses. What has happened the last few years, if that were the case, then the town manager included something in his budget, a statement that said that if the, if the final chapter seventy numbers were more than what they had in the plan, that, that that would flow to, and increase the school department's budget. I guess we forgot that part.
Yeah, right, but.
Sorry.
And, and so this was discussed at long-range plan and right now the thinking is that we will wait until the final number is, but, but that we're hoping that we will get that, that money.
So you wanted to have a discussion about priorities, is that what you're?
No, I mean, so that final number is what will be included in the vote at town meeting.
Correct.
So the question is, shouldn't we present to town meeting what we're going to spend it on? So in April, we'll need to do that at the latest.
Okay, so, so, yeah, okay, so that's the question. So how, what's the, how long do we need to wait before we get anything? We're not going to be anything definitive until the budget's passed, right?
For a dollar of that will be added to the budget, but we could certainly have a priority list together that is more than.
I mean, I, could it be a, could it be a statement at town meeting where we say, you know, this is anticipated and these are what we're going to spend it on or no?
So, so what the suggestion was is that we would use the house ways and means number, which is not the final budget number, as our guideline and the amount that would, would we would get, which may or may not be two forty. It might be a little above, it might be a little below, but at that point, we should be able to say, yes, we're getting that amount of money, even though the final budget for the state hasn't been completed. That was, that was the discussion.
Okay.
And I think, as you say, can I, the reason that this should flow to the schools is that if the state decides via the governor and the House and the Senate that education is priority for the state and that education should be funded, it makes sense that, you know, we get that little extra funding because that's what the, that's what the Commonwealth is saying is important to them. Yeah.
Kirsty and then Bill.
I didn't, I'm not ready.
The, in the past, we've had a, uh, in the superintendent's full budget proposal, package that were funded, partially funded and not funded at this time. And when we set up our priority list, it was based on that. One or two times, your priorities and our priorities have been a slight difference from when we've adjusted them. Is that something we're gonna see in the near future? Or we, should, should we base the, the list that you have there as the priority?
Well, the, the list of unfunded.
Right.
Exists in, in the budget detail.
Right.
That's the, that's the point. This is what we're proposing.
Right.
You may disagree and, but there's a, but one thing that we all know is that there is a defined amount of money.
Yes, yes, I understand that, but going along with what Dr. Seuss just said, hoping again, maybe a little bit more, some things might, should we look at that list as a priority that the partially funded would then, if there was sufficient money, be moved up or would you want to revise that list for?
No, the list is there, you could choose something from that. I'm just saying that since we even had our last discussion, these two needs have arisen. Now, in the budget detail, if you could go back to that one where we had, um, the listing, we have three reserve positions for the elementary, one of which I'm, I'm just positive I know where it's going to have to go, but there are two others. It's possible that the, the needs I was talking about could be funded that way, but then there's no reserve.
I, I respect that and I respect your right, the administration's right to do this priority, but this becomes a public document and if people see it and all of a sudden the need is, the priority list that goes out or be there should be something that people can look at so that we don't all of a sudden jump a line or something in the future and the parents say, well, you missed my line or something like this. That's all I'm asking for, a clarification.
The, the unfunded list is not really prioritized.
Right, okay, so then maybe that's something you can bring to us.
What you're asking me to do is to go back and prioritize it?
Not necessarily on that, but for us here, so we can make a public statement and we agree, we're in agreement with you that if extra money comes up, are we, that we can have, these are the things that are going to bump forward. I don't know if I've articulated it correctly and I apologize.
Could you hold on?
Right, we could, we can do, if, if we get the additional money and maybe we use the two forty since that's the number we know now, it could be more, it could be less, say, okay, if we had that amount of money, these are the things that we would spend it on.
Exactly.
In a priority list.
Yes, exactly.
So, but my point is also in that issue is that we could cover these two positions with reserve, but then we have no reserve, in which case then reserve becomes the priority.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just trying to make sure that people understood that the things which are not on this list are actually rising higher, that, that were just mentioned, that have just come up. Um, the special education classroom opening and the new classroom and preschool are going to be higher than anything we're seeing here because they're mandated by law because of the special education. Um, and they pretty much use up most of the two forty. And I know you folks understand that this is more for the people following at home and, and in our room today, um, because it's confusing because we have this list and it shows things and the things that we're actually talking about spending all the money on are not on the list. And they're gonna win because they win.
Because they're mandated.
Yeah, because they're mandated.
Unfunded mandate.
Right. Um, we're making them funded mandate, but.
Well, unfunded by the state.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I'll start on some of my, yeah, so that was one thing I wanted to bring up. My questions, for whatever reason, are coming more on process and, and kind of the presentation of the budget. And I just want to say that while I understand the need for the full-time kindergarten aides and, and the concerns of parents, I have been frustrated with the way that this has been discussed at our table here in that it really hasn't been discussed. And what we haven't heard, we've heard a lot about people's concerns for what they see as needs, but what we haven't heard from is from actual kindergarten teachers or someone speaking on behalf of the kindergarten teachers, talking about what the needs are in the day, how were the issues that people were concerned about actually handled? Partly I'm concerned that, I don't want other people at home thinking that we've had kindergarten students this year who are running rampant because there aren't enough adults in the classroom or because one kindergartner needs their quote, um, zipped while another one needs to go to the bathroom. And I think there are, there have been ways that these things are handled and I think that we should be getting that information out to parents and to the community so that we're not just making a decision sounding like all of a sudden it's brought to our attention that, oh, this is a terrible situation and, and we have to fix it. I think there is a need, it will be useful to have full-time kindergarten aides. We have had half-time for many, many years, so there's, we're only talking about a fraction of the school day that we're increasing the support for. But I'm just, I've been frustrated in that I think there could have been better education about what's happening in a kindergarten classroom and how situations are handled and that there is a concern for safety and things, even in the situation where there's only one adult in the classroom. Um, you know, there, there's ways that these things have been handled. And, uh, so that's one thing.
You want to let her respond?
Can we talk, talk about that?
Let's talk about that first.
Um, yes, the, first of all, the elementary principals did put this as a high priority. Um, the kindergarten teachers, I think, would tell you that that's something they would like to have, that's something they've wanted to have for a couple of years. But how is it being handled right now? Um, there, we have halftime TAs and sometimes we've actually had them stay for a full day for a number of reasons. But we also have other TAs in the building. We have special education teaching assistants as well as a building, uh, a building TA. And when the need is there, those resources are moved. We also, in some situations, not many, but we do have some one-to-one and they're in the classroom as, as well. So there are adults in the classroom and we, we even have a couple of large classroom TAs. So it's not, and I think that if people went and, and looked at any of our kindergartens in the district, you would not, you would not see the way it was depicted. It's very calm, the kids move, they know what they're doing, it's very orderly. That's not to say that we couldn't benefit from that, but when I proposed a difference, a different way to sort of look at teaching assistants, it didn't seem like there was a lot of support for that alternative way of looking at it. So that's why it is in, because it seemed that that was from the discussion and I, and there may be some disagreement among all of you on this, but that seemed to be a very high priority, uh, to have full-time. Do I think that we could handle with less than full-time? I had proposed at the last meeting that we have some kind of a, a ratio, um, that if you had four classes and, four kindergarten classes in a building, you had two full-time TAs. In fact, you may end up having more than that because of way that the special education TA is assigned during that afternoon time. So, um, I think that's the genesis of it. I, I don't think there's more, really much more to say. One of the reasons for, the, the reason of the ratio was that a lot of parents felt that they needed another teaching assistant during math instruction. Well, how it works in the afternoon is that, yes, math instruction does take place in almost all the elementary kindergartens right after lunch, but after that, that's when the specials come. And so teaching assistants, uh, go, you know, don't go to specials, they can support other classrooms and that was the reason for it. But, um, it is, seems to be a priority of the committee, priority of kindergarten parents as well as teachers.
Jeff, well, let, okay, just part of this. The vast majority of the parents that came and I, and I would support having, if there's a need from the committee to have teachers come in, were not based on a safety thing. Several parents did mention safety, but the mass, the major need for a teaching assistant at the kindergarten level is for assessment, because you cannot do group assessment like you can by getting a written examination or something. This has to be done one-on-one and if you do it even in a small group, the other children are going to give the same answers as the first one. That is my major push to have teaching assistants at the kindergarten level because the, the teacher is the primary assessor of the needs of this child, both mentally, physically, developmentally. And the whole prescription for the next twelve years have done at that time. And that's my, to me, the major need to have that class. I don't, I think the safety of the children is prior, is number one priority in this district and is handled extremely well. And I would agree with you. I would, don't want any parent out there to feel that we have had an environment that has not been safe for our children. But the, the priority for the teaching assistant in my mind, and what I heard from the majority of the parents, was to deal with the assessment of the child and helping in that development.
Do you, Kirsty's still got the floor. Do you, do you, do you want to talk about the kindergarten?
I just wanted to say, I just think we could have had a better, more informed discussion about what's really going on and how assessments are handled and, and things. Just it, we never got the information that helps make it really clear that this is necessary or not. And instead, we're kind of going on our gut and stuff and, and that's just not a great way of making decisions. And I think we should have had more information. And anyway, I'm not disagreeing with the final decision. I think, I just, I'm frustrated with the decision process. Um, okay, so I'll, I'll cede at this point for whoever.
Mr. Schlick.
Well, we're in the middle of the decision process. We're not making a decision until next month. Um, the, the thing is, there are a lot of reasons to want to do the, uh, teaching assistants in kindergarten. I mean, one of the descriptions we had was that we have specials in the afternoon for kindergarten because that's when the, the teaching assistants are not there. Having the teaching assistant with the class continually, it will increase the flexibility of the scheduling within the building. So you're not, you don't have to go and isolate the kindergartens out to the afternoon. Uh, and you can have more focus on academics in the afternoon for other grade levels because then they can have more flexibility to have specials in the afternoon. Uh, the, the thing that really. The thing that really concerns me as a, as an educator, and somebody who's been an early childhood principal, is that when we have kids coming in for the first day of school, we're mixing a new group of kids who have never interacted together, who are new to school, new to the whole situation, and developmentally, you've got a year's, a year's distribution of kids, and you've got a distribution of growth and maturity levels within that distribution. So, for a five-year-old, to have a year's, a year's distribution, that's 20% of their lifetime that we've got as a distribution there. There's so much variance on a group of kids who are coming in for the first time, who you don't know, and you don't have a track record with. When you move up to first grade, you've seen those kids for a year, you know how they respond to school, you have a track record, so that you can make placements into first grades based on who they are, and track them with knowledge of a year's worth of schooling history. Two sets of eyes on a kindergarten class, to my mind, is sort of an essential. To have one adult with a class of kindergarteners, I think, just leaves yourself open for a kid who has a need, to then put the whole class in a position where none of the other kids can be, have their needs immediately, if that comes about as well. So, I really, really strongly support the idea of doing this, and as we know at this point, what has happened is, we've had all the discussions around the table, we've had people come in, superintendent has talked to her cabinet, listened to our comments, listened to the discussion in the community, and she chose, in her proposed budget to us, to put the kindergarten aides in. It is our option to keep them there or remove them, that, our decision comes after this budget is presented, and before we vote it and send it to town meeting. So if there are four colleagues who don't want these, or four colleagues who do, that's when the decision will be made, and if we, as a committee, want to bring more people in to have a further discussion of this, either within subcommittee, or in front of the public here on a Thursday night, we should do that. But I will tell you, I strongly support that inclusion.
Thank you. Kirsty, do you have any?
Not at this.
On the kindergarten issue, so that was, one of the things that was raised at the school committee chat, and the question, one of the questions was whether, you know, should we end up with really small classes, we do have Thompson this year, or a school that has a history of having, you know, parental volunteers in the library, for example, where there really isn't a need for the TA to go along, would the principal have flexibility to reuse those TAs in other places?
The answer is absolutely yes.
Okay, because the other question was, you know, we, you know, we're going to have this policy of full-time TAs in kindergarten, but then we have a situation at Bishop, for example, this year, where there are three classes with 25, and suddenly, they're only sharing one TA, so they get a TA a third of a day, basically, if even. So, the question was, you know, does that really make sense to put all the resources in kindergarten, if, again, there's a situation where you've got large first grades, or large second grades, or something?
Yeah.
So, actually, I think I was one of the few people who, who had that concern last time we talked, that I was worried that giving, prioritizing full-time kindergarten aides would give us less flexibility for things like large classes in first and second grade, because I really, kindergarten is important, but that, kindergarten first and second are really the most crucial years, I see, in terms of the education of a kid. And, so one thing to keep, to throw out there, is do we want to come up with some flexible cutoff number, so that if we have a kindergarten class of 18, for example, that that may not get a full-time TA, so we can direct those resources to a larger first or second grade? So I, I think that that would be a good idea, that isn't in the current proposal, that isn't what we've been talking about, but, you know, cutoff numbers of 20 have been talked about in the past, I think that's not a bad cutoff number.
I did discuss this with the elementary principals, actually, more than one occasion. They would prefer, if we're going to do full-time TAs, to do it across the board. One thing, there's a lot of changes that go on, so at what point do you decide? And it could, the numbers could go down, in fact, that, you know, does happen, and did happen, and they can also go up. So, given that, they would prefer just to have it be uniform. And I share your concern about teaching assistants in, at other grades. I'll tell you, one, one thing that we find is a challenge, though, is actually finding teaching assistants. Sometimes we've had, we have money in the budget that we haven't been able to use for teaching assistants. And as the economy gets better, and it is in Massachusetts, that is one thing that we've always seen happen, when the economy is not doing well, then there's more availability. So, the other issue I did bring up, and we haven't really gone to each teaching assistant, is whether they will want to remain if they have to go to full-time. So we might need to take a look at then, if the answer is no, do we then have a different person come in for the afternoon? I mean, that's another possibility, too. So I think we'll, there's going to be some flexibility in terms of that, because once somebody's already had the training in the tools program, I think we would not be well-served to just say, well, just because you can't go full-time, you can't continue.
I'd like to suggest, through the chair, prior to decide, making a decision on this, that we have some kindergarten teachers come in and explain the benefits to the full board to understand, in my mind, the difference between a set number, because it's a population thing, as opposed to an educational value of the thing.
I certainly can arrange, arrange that if you want at the next meeting, I'll ask.
You want him here on a school night, when I can teach the next thing?
I, that's why I didn't make an emotion, Jeff.
I'm doing that now.
Me, too.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
That's why I didn't make an emotion, I'm sticking full Catholic.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd also like to find out if they would be going with the students to the specials, because I haven't understood that to be current practice.
I would expect that, yeah.
I know you would expect that, I would like to know that that is actually what's going to happen.
I understand, I asked a couple, they said they do. Now, they could have been, they could have been sped once, which would be required, so I could, I could be wrong.
Can I, I just want to speak for, in terms of cutoffs, just to give people an idea, looking at what we've got now.
Yeah.
For 24 kindergarten classrooms, if we did a cutoff of 18 or lower, we'd have, we'd lose two. If we had 19 or lower, we'd lose five. So.
Yeah.
It's not.
20.
But again, we're looking at them as physical bodies, not the amount of time that they take for the teacher.
Your line?
When we're done with kindergarten?
Yeah, have we done with kindergarten? Do we want to talk about any other grade? Okay, go ahead.
So the, the one other thing that people have asked about, and we've asked about, and I know it's still developing, because the schedule isn't done yet, but this budget presents Gibbs with just the 1.3 million, it doesn't present the full Gibbs budget. So, you know, it doesn't, if we can be done before town meeting, then we'll just explain that it's in flux, but before the end of this year, before June, I think we need to see a budget for Gibbs that shows how much Gibbs is getting, how much Odison is left with, so.
To clarify, are you asking for this before town meeting, or before we?
I mean, it would be, ideally, it would be something that we could have for town meeting, but if that's not, if the timing doesn't work out, because we don't know yet, then.
I think that, I'm speaking, I think that's very possible to do, in fact, I think we could even give that to you, it's not, won't be perfect.
Rough, yes.
Because we want, haven't hired people, we're, we're getting very close in on the schedule. The schedule, why is it taking so long? Is that we're trying to do some innovation with the schedule as well?
Yeah, I understand.
And that, that's always challenging. But yeah, I don't think that's a problem, because we know, right now, the staff that's going from Odison to Gibbs.
Great.
So that can easily be done, but what additional staff we will need is still there.
So we can have, I mean, just as, so we can have it before town meeting?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so I think, I think we should have it before town meeting, because I think it's a question, it's a pretty, we should expect that question at town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so we should get it sometime.
We can break, we can break it out, Odison and Gibbs.
Yeah, I remember we had asked for.
Write that down.
Got that, John? We were going to ask for, you know, what it costs to educate children sixth, seventh, and eighth grade this year, versus what it's going to cost next year, remember that? We were talking about a comparison between the two.
Right, right, well, I actually, I, what I think was being asked for is, like, just show us what it, what's in the column.
Yeah.
In terms of what's the difference between this year and next year, it's going to be a combination of a couple of things, the 1.3.
Yep.
Plus, when you take the staff that is currently here, steps, lanes, colas, that's basically it, that would be the difference.
And the 4FT you're adding at Odison. And the 4, and the 4FT that you're adding.
Yes, and the Odison increase, yes, right, right, I mean, that, that's what the change is.
Okay.
We're not going, it's going to take a whole year before we get operating expenses, because we don't know what.
Well, you won't have the actuals, but you have a budget.
Well, we, we're projecting 80,000. I don't, we think that's the right number, but now that other costs are going to go up, as the stock market is indicating that they now believe that all these costs are going to go up, inflation, it's hard to say.
Yeah, let's not go there. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we've, any other questions, any other grade level, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I'm very comfortable with getting a division of the Gibbs-Odison, I think it's necessary before we vote the final budget, but I'm very comfortable with budget transfers after that, as.
Yeah, right.
We hone it out, so that's really both important, positive, and something we can work around.
So I, I see the need for, for educational purposes, to educate the public on, you know, the difference, you know, what we're, what we're investing operationally in the new middle school, the new sixth-grade school. I have a question, there was, there was a conversation that took place here a few, two, three meetings ago, about a change in the athletic fee structure. Is that, so is, is that, is that going to change the projected revenue from athletic fees at all, or are you just assuming it's going to stay the same within the structure?
It's going to be revenue.
So it's, it's not, it's not going to lead to more people participating in athletics, more people paying fees, that sort of thing?
That's not the plan.
Okay.
It may.
It may, but you're not going to make that in the projection?
Correct.
Okay, but we might have results that could be, that could be positive or negative a year from now.
Could be.
Okay, all right. And where's that stand, that whole conversation, that research that you guys?
So there's, I believe that the notification of a survey coming out has gone out, but I don't think the survey has gone out yet, and there's planned for at least two public sessions to gather input. The idea was this could, that could go on simultaneously as this, because it wouldn't affect the budget as it is, and can take a little longer to get more information.
So the school committee might take a vote in the later spring?
Could, yes, more than likely, yes.
Yes, there's a new fee structure, okay, and it, and it's revenue, it's neutral. Okay, that's my only question on that. I was hoping there might be similar revenue, I don't, but, we don't know. Go ahead, questions?
Oh, it would mean that we wouldn't have gate receipts, right, that would be the difference, that money would be rolled in, so.
Yeah, but I mean.
But it'd be the same amount, but just sort of, would be gate, yeah.
But if, you know, more people participate, because there's an easier, easier fee structure, I don't know. But you're probably right, it's too early to make that kind of a projection.
The plan is that the additional user fee would offset the loss of gate receipts, but also, in athletics, we're not projecting an increase because of an operational change that will allow for us to use more of our buses, that will decrease that line, and be able to spread throughout to the other, other places within the athletic budget, to make up for, you know, semi-structural deficit in that budget right now.
Okay.
It's, there could be a change, for sure, but a lot of our sports are cut sports, so there's a set number that you can have on a team, there's very few that are not. Those could rise, but we're talking along the edges, I think.
Okay, all right, just wanted to probe that. All right, any other questions about the FY '19 budget proposal by Dr. Bodie? Okay, yes.
I just want to make one other process, kind of, or not process, but just reading the superintendent budget message and stuff, I just wonder if we couldn't be putting things in a more favorable light, and highlighting what we've achieved with this budget. This came up somewhat in the long-range plan, and I'll talk to Dr. Bodie and Mr., well, Mr. Dinesio was there, so he heard it, but anyway, about, that they would like to see something that captures what our goal is, for, for example, high, elementary school staffing for each school, like, one principal, one assistant principal, you know, what the elementary school principals are proposing, and then, how close we are to achieving that, you know, what are the actual numbers in, in looking at the different schools? But we should, I think we should also be doing this in our messaging, like, aren't we, and I haven't had a chance to go back and double-check this, but my sense is that we are decreasing the number of students in a cluster across a number of grades this year, with the opening of the Gibbs, and with the increased cluster, the increased cluster from three and a half to four and seventh grade. And if we're doing that, we should be letting people know that, because it's both, it's important for parents to know, because it affects their students, it's helpful for negotiations, because it's decreasing people's workload, but we don't have that information anywhere, and I think that would be really useful. And, and if there's anything else that we achieve, you know, we didn't have, that we had full-time kindergarten aides in, I mean, we need to be making it easier to find the big things that we've accomplished with this budget, in the messaging.
Okay, that's a, all right, let me take another look at it, you can always change it, you know, this is, while it's out there, this is something that is evolving. Sure, that's very possible, I'm not sure, I'd have to actually do the math on it, if it really, if the seventh grade really brings it down that much, because we're having an increase in enrollment.
And then we say, we're addressing the enrollment increase of this many students, you know, it's, we've achieved things with this budget, and it's hard to figure out what we've achieved, and.
That's it, well, okay, I, I can see your point of view, and I'm not sure, I thought that it was not, not there, but let me go back and take another look at it.
What we see is, we've added five more positions, but I don't know.
Describe, describe what we achieved, a little bit more clearly, okay. All right, we'll take another look at that and see, so the next rendition you get will have more of that, okay?
Okay, or, anything else on the budget? All right, we're going to move on to Dr. Bodie's superintendent report, I'm going to start with the building, building project updates.
I actually have quite a few things tonight, to just.
Start with you.
Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge that this has been, the last couple of days have been a little tough on the weather front.
You've done a good job.
Well, thank you, but it's been hard, and I do keep in mind, not that I'm going to compromise safety for this, but it is very true that our community has many, two fam, two people in a family working, and so the after-school programs are immensely important to them, and so want to make very sure that we are, one, safe, but we don't want to compromise that, but at the same time, keep that in mind. And I want, I want to publicly thank DPW, and also our director of transportation, Steve Angel, they have been terrific in constant communication about it, being very honest about it, and also doing such a great job. I mean, that was, they were up all night, they do get third-party contractors, but a lot of our own people are out there doing that, and they try very hard to do whatever they can to make sure that we have a safe opening in the morning. So I do want to thank them. And they also got a compliment from somebody on this floor, saying, "Come in from other towns, and you come, and you come to Arlington, and the roads are good." So, they should know that. But anyway, I don't think we're out of the woods, fortunately, I'm looking ahead, next week is all in the 40s, this is good. This is very good, and in fact, we'll come back to this in the structured learning, where we are on that piece of it, but, anyway. So, we have a number of things here, actually, let me, I'm going to jump, not necessarily do it in this order, the school calendar, we've had more discussions since the last meeting, in fact, I, in my head, I thought that we had done the vote on the basic, but we, it was really just the first reading, and so I do want to go over some of the things that have been talked about and modified a bit, and because you haven't really seen this till tonight, we can defer this vote, because some of the things are not key, basically, people want to know when the vacations are, what's opening day, and there is one thing about opening day that we want to give some more thought to, which was, at about the same time that we were developing this, our secretary of state decided to have primary day on Tuesday after Labor Day. Which really affects our kindergartens. Which really affects our kindergartens. I mean, it affects kindergarten and it affects elementary because almost all of our elementary schools, they, all of them are, are places of voting, and they use the cafeteria. So, when we have Election Day in a school, in the elementary schools, we do not have lunch in the cafeteria. We do some kind of a box lunch, or either eat in the room. So, now I'm thinking, rethinking this, do we really want to do that on the first day of school? Would it make more sense to not have lunch on the first day of school? And talk to the elementary principals about that, and they think that's a fine idea. Because it's, you know, once you get into routine, going off your routine isn't such a difficult thing. But the first day of school, maybe not.
I can support that, especially with the following things that you're going to come forward. We wouldn't be pushing the whole calendar out a day, so using what's coming up next.
Right, well, because that was the issue, it's like, should we, there was some discussion, should we start on Wednesday? But that, there's no reason why the secondary can't start on Tuesday. And that means you've got the district in two different timeframes.
I agree.
But for kindergarten, the last two years, we've had the open house in the elementary schools that first, on that Monday. And again, do we want to have the additional, we have a primary day plus all of the cars parked. It may not make sense to have the opening day on, for kindergarten, on that Tuesday. So, this is something we want to refer back to the kindergartens group. And just want to know that that's still not settled. But I think that they're going to probably support that. I think the elementary principals were a little divided on, but basically, thought that was probably a good idea. But it means that we change how the rest of the week goes in terms of how we begin kindergarten next year. But I think for people listening and for prospective kindergarten parents will certainly communicate this. But I think if we do it in March, that's fine. That's when we're doing registration anyway, is in March. So, if we come back March 1st and have a vote on that piece, it can go, it can go out with all of our kindergarten registration information of what's happening about that. So, that is, that's one issue with the calendar. We did a few little edits that needed to be done that we had missed. So, here's another issue. We'll come back to school committee calendar. We did some changes here, but you may not like them and you may want to weigh, you certainly want to weigh in on that. But I want to go forward to December. We have on Monday, the 24th, and certain Christmas is on Tuesday, the 25th. But we've always, we've always had, we've never really had school on Christmas Eve. I think in the year out following this, this can be another issue about heat and so forth. So, we're changing that designation to a V, which is on your, and then the same thing on the 31st.
V for vacation. V for vacation.
V for vacation, vacation day. That was what the consensus was among all the, that's correct, right? We think so.
Are you talking about the 21st?
But the 21st, here's a question for everybody. This year, we went on the Friday to the end of the day. And I did get a lot of comments via different people from parents that, why not have an early release day like we do for Thanksgiving? Because of travel week that week. And so, I bring it to you to see what you think about that. We could have an early release day that goes through lunch and do just a slightly early, early release like we do other days, like 1:00. But that's why I'm saying, you probably don't want to vote tonight because you might have some discussion on this and, or you might want to think about it, too, on just these, this issue. Okay, so that's another one. The other one was, so, basically, we changed, it's really just some nomenclature here. But then we get to change that one, too. Now, on the 18th of June, which would be our 180th day absent any snow days, we're changing that to an early release all because we do early release all on the last day of school. And then, of course, the five days, when you add them to the calendar, that would also be an early release all. I think I've hit the major changes that we might want to consider. On the 18th, we usually do an 11:30 dismissal. That way, 11:15 is technically where the number is for a half-day, but we've been doing 11:30. So, those are the only changes really from the last time. So, there are still more things to put into this calendar, but it'll come a little bit later because it requires a lot of thought and everybody's part of conferences, when we want early release all for the high school and the middle school. And we do want that on the calendar, but that just takes a lot more planning. But this year, I would like to get it earlier than May. You know, the more we can move it back, the better, I think, for parents and planning. But the main thing people want to know is, when are we going to start school? When's the 180th day? What do vacations look like? Those are the biggies right now.
Okay, yeah, Jennifer.
Two things. One is, last time we talked about maybe moving the school committee meetings in June to 6 and 20 rather than 13 and 27?
Or even 6 and 13.
Or 6 and 13, we could do. I mean, yeah, so, yeah, the 27th, I think it's, I lightly, that would work for.
Not a good idea.
Terrible idea. So, and the other thing, I just had a question about, do we have an early release all on the 18th, even if we have several snow days? So, suppose our last day is the 20th or something?
The EA moves.
I see, okay, to whatever the last day is.
The last day will be.
I think that's just confusing the way it's sort of, the way it looks, it's just not obvious what that means. So, you might want to triple asterix with a little explanation.
Discuss it as it comes.
No, no, the question about whether that is an early release all if we have a couple of snow days, right? It's just not clear.
We would know, we would know that probably the beginning of May to give focus.
We can probably indicate something like this on the, on the calendar.
Just put right here, last day of school.
Last day of school is an early release day for all, no matter what the day is.
Without actually putting that on, yeah, yeah.
Jeff, I may.
Jennifer, please.
No, no, those are the two things, yeah.
As far as the second meeting in June, that usually is, we make a decision whether to have it or not for the amount of business. Because I don't think we've had a second meeting in June for several years.
No, we haven't.
But we can already decide now that we're not having one on the 27th.
Oh, we can just keep it on the calendar and then, right.
But we can, why don't we put it on the 20th, you know, just.
Usually at my house. It's usually at my house.
Karen looked up when the MASC conferences in November, it's actually the 8th, 7th, 8th. So, we moved the 8th, took that out, it'd be two weeks to the 29th, and then did another two weeks to the 13th, and then had the 20th. We had one that last week this year, too, seemed to be fine. But that was the reason why there was a little bit of shifting in there.
All right, any more questions on the calendar, yeah?
If you do the early release, extra early release in September on the first day of school, what will happen to children who need, who would normally get free or reduce lunch? Will they get lunch?
We can arrange that. We've done that before. We provide a box lunch.
Yeah, that would be my biggest concern with that. And I have one other, okay, Jennifer asked my other question, never mind.
So, we're not, just where you list the school times, we should add in Gibbs with Odysseum if it's going to be the same time? And also, I mean, if, we should only put these times here if we're absolutely certain we're not changing. We should only put these times here for absolutely certain we're not changing times as a result of any negotiations or anything else?
Not for next year, no. There is a calendar committee as part of negotiations, but since a contract wouldn't be ratified till May.
It's too late.
It's too late for next year, so nothing will change next year, anything would be the following year.
So, I just want to raise something that Ms. Starks had mentioned a few years ago, that we might want to think in the future about having a two-year calendar, just sort of move in that direction so that we're not always sort of spraying last-minute type of making those decisions.
We could do that. In fact, what we could do, one thing I probably couldn't do two years is, you know, where all the early release days are.
I think it's most about vacation that people care about.
We could probably do that this year.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Well, do we, does negotiations affect this to some extent?
Yes.
So, I don't think we can do it quite yet.
It affects the start times, but it doesn't affect this, well, I shouldn't say that.
I think, I think we might need to wait until after that, but, but I think that we should, just, we should move in that direction.
Maybe, maybe what we can do is in June, do something. Could possibly do that.
Okay, calendar, okay.
Just with regard to the vacations, as long as I've lived in Massachusetts, the vacations have always been tied to President's Day and Patriot's Day. And that's just sort of hardwired into the, into the deal. So, that, I think we can say right now that, and we can take a vote at some point, the committee has no plans to alter vacations on President's Day and Patriot's Day week if that's so desires, if that's the desire of the committee. Now, obviously, if we're negotiating the start day of the school year, that might be a little squishy if we don't have a language in the contract. If the language in the contract puts us in a definitive position, we can sort of state, we anticipate the first day of school to always be X date because we do follow the patterns. We do. There was another thing I wanted to say, and just out of my mind. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, let's, I think we talked about the calendar enough, unless anyone can make a motion for yours. Okay, let's move on to the other things you want to talk about.
So, we're talking about all of the different building updates. Well, one of the things with respect to weather is that we had to, last night, change the forum and move it to the snow date, which is this coming Tuesday. Turns out, I think it was probably a good decision at the end of it because it was just a mess last night. But what we're also engaging in right now is the visioning process. And today, we had our second session for that larger committee. And Dr. Alice Ampe, Mr. Haner, and Dr. Seuss were all there, and they may want to, you know, talk about what went on today.
Saw some beautiful schools, some wonderful ideas, and it was exciting. The openness and the way we were coming together, it was very impressive.
Right, we started out with looking at learning goals, and then brought back the summary of all these. And it's, I, we have lots of documentation about what those are. But today's purpose was to, you know, go deeper into that and also to start aligning what the educational goals are with what the spaces would be. So, what is your through line? If you believe that you need more collaboration, which is, was a high, a high priority, what does that mean in terms of space? And so, there was some looking at, we looked at a lot of different, what they call design patterns in terms of how you can organize space. And then, the final activity today, which was to look at what the guiding principles would be. Now, we don't have a final list of guiding principles. In fact, if we had had the forum last night, we would have, be taking people through sort of a mini-version of this. And that will happen on Tuesday. They will see a lot of the same slides that the committee saw today. And so, what will happen is that all will come together in the educational plan. So, by the end, by the end of, middle of next week, the end of next week, everything that's happened, both from the parent, the forums, everything's happened from the visioning, will all be given to Dr. Jangor and myself to start writing the education plan. And you will have our first draft for the March 1 meeting. Well, our timeframe is awesome. I'm not sure awesome is the word that we used to describe it. It's a really tight timeframe, but we said this, we're going to be on this really fast track. And we need to be because we need your vote of approval on it on March 15th.
Yeah, so it's a first read on the first.
First rate.
Second read on the 15th.
All right, so the high school is moving along at a rapid pace. And the building committee has been meeting, and now is meeting every other week as all of these, as we go, as we go forward. So, after the educational plan is approved, then the next step in that process is that we start looking at all the spaces. And the thing is, there is a fixed, given our design number, there is a number we're going to be working with in terms of spaces. So, if you wanted to have a science room, and of course, the question is, how many science rooms do you need? But if you have a science room that is 1,400 square feet, most of our, in fact, I don't even know if we have one science room that's close to that. Most of our, most of our science rooms are even sometimes smaller than the 900 that they recommend for regular classrooms. So, it's figuring out all these different spaces, and you'll get a copy of that as well, as well as the building committee. And all of that, then another piece that's just going to happen in March is that we're going to be looking at what the other sites are. As part of this process for the high school, you have to, by MSBA regulations, you have to look at other sites in town as a possibility for the school. And so, the building committee will hear that report in March. You will also hear about it as well and what the pros and cons are, if we even going to be able to consider another site. But you have to go through that process. And the forum in March will be an interesting one for people. We're not going to have it at Town Hall, which is, it's going to be here in the high school, Monday, March 5th. At that one, the first hour will be, we're going to set up tours for people to see the school. And then, we're going to be, then we're going to go into the old hall for the next part of the program. And then, there'll be one more forum in April as well. So, everyone's going to be, have a way to have a voice in this, get the reports, and as we move forward. So, eventually, we'll get everything that we need to get into MSBA so that by the end of the summer, we have the preferred option decided. And we have the educational plan and spaces so that next year, we can begin the schematic drawings.
When I look at the schedule and in our package, I was expecting a lot of those items to be on the schedule, and they're not. So, I mean, it's for the building committee, but I would be, I would be expecting a more detailed schedule because there's so many moving parts. When is that space design report going to come? When is the existing conditions report going to come?
Why don't we get, we have that. That's all, that's all been given to the building committee. Let's get, we can upload that. In fact, we can do that tomorrow so you can see. It's a very detailed report. But I will tell you where it also exists. Anytime a report is given to the building committee, it is put on the website. So, there is a website dedicated to the building project. And if you go on that, all of that documentation is there. Everything that goes to the building committee is put there after it. But we can, you know, send you copies of it, too. I'll send you the links to it, I think that's probably the easiest thing because these are big documents. And, you know, the building committee meetings are open meetings, so people can come and listen as well. And the dates for those meetings are on the, again, on the building website. All right, anything about the high school more? Jeff, you're the chair of the committee, is there anything you want to add?
No, I just, you know, just keep, I mean, the school committee's role is, we all have a vote to take on the 15th to approve the educational vision. And so, if there's, if people want more information, we'll get a lot of information on the 1st of March, but if people want. But if people want more information, they can talk to our three reps on the committee.
Gibbs is going along perfectly as, on schedule. Though there have been a lot of surprises during construction that eats away at the contingency, and the permanent town building committee has been regularly hearing about all of these. It's, it's an old building. Of course, it gives us a little bit of a sneak preview to what might happen here. The buildings are sort of the same vintage. Though I think this building has been maintained and might be in better shape. It's hard to say until you get in behind the walls. But at any rate, one, we, they've made changes to the diagrams, so that we have a, a, a drop-off space. So that, and then also a new plan for the, when the buses are going to come in. So that's happening. What's, what was, happened this last week was Kristen D. Francisco's first newsletter to all the fifth-grade parents. And, and that's going to start happening more regularly, just to keep everybody informed where we are. And we haven't set the date yet, but it's roughly going to be mid-March. We're going to have another parent forum, and then we're going to have an advisory committee meeting before that to help plan for that, that forum. So those dates are all, I'll send you the dates, because I'll announce what the date is on March 1, but it'll, it'll be out well before that.
If I just could add, we are very fortunate between the architect and the construction firm. Their, every little thing that come up to interfere with this thing, they've dealt with it very quickly, they've done very professionally, and within budget and on time. And it's going to be a little bit tight, but they're working very hard at this, and I'm very impressed by these people. So I just wanted to say that publicly.
They've been terrific to work with, absolutely terrific.
Jennifer, and then.
Oh, just because I know we're not meeting again in February, I just wanted to encourage you to get to the community when our, the next meeting is. And I know you mentioned it was sometime in March, so.
We're going to set that next week.
Yeah, to give people as much time as possible to.
Right.
Yes.
Before vacation will go up.
Excellent.
Yes. The newsletter was very helpful. At, at Dallin, one of the parents then passed it on to the PTO list. And I think because it is of interest to fourth-grade parents and third-grade parents, so that would be my suggestion for, for Kristen, is to, to send it, you know, more broadly, if possible, to the elementary school lists.
We can, I can send it out on the elementary list, forward it. Sure. That's a good idea. Okay. Hardy. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about Hardy, John?
Sure. So Hardy, we talked about, I think, back in the late fall, about some additions that were going to be needed to, to supplement that budget that we're going to come up at a special town meeting. So you, you'll see there's a placeholder, I believe it's Article 6. The estimate right now, latest and greatest, is I think about $1.2 million additional to the 3.5.
I was like, that's cheap.
That was already approved. It's really made up of two big pieces. There's a, there's an ADA accessibility piece, and there's general construction costs. For the ADA, accessibility has to do with upgrades to the existing building that were triggered because of the scope of the project and the value of the property. And Adam had shared, Tom had shared a memo with the finance committee about what they are. Things like slope of ramps, heights of signs, width of doors, how hard it is to open a door, things like that. That makes up about a third of the 1.2 million. The rest in the construction cost, the general construction cost is that the original estimates were based on a very conceptual design. So as they started to do the, the actual design work, they realized that the estimates were based on six classrooms at 900 square feet. That's not enough square feet, because you need more rooms for getting to the classrooms. So there was an increase in square footage, not, not a lot, but that was part of it. There was, when we got the, now that we have bids back, there's, you know, came in a little higher than the original estimate, about 100, 150,000 more. There's contingencies that were originally set in the beginning, thinking it's a new, new build on the lower side of, of 3% for design contingency and 5% for general. Those were increased to 5% for design and 10% for general, given that you're going to attach to a, another building that already exists. There was a cafeteria scope in the original plan was a much smaller number. That's come back. The estimate for that is much higher now. It's about 175,000. There was some added work, because origi, as, as they first started doing the design, they realized they're going to need more than one cost estimate. So they did SDD and C, they did schematic design, cost estimate, design development, cost estimate, and construction design, cost estimate, right before we got the bids back. The good news is the bids came back very close to what the estimate was. So there was some increase for those, not much, 25,000. And then the FFNE original budget was much lower than what our, what we usually budget for our classroom furniture and, and technology. So that made up the other pieces of it. But the two big things were increasing the contingency, the bid, getting the actual bids, and the ADA work.
And this is all going to be discussed at the town meeting on the 12th, this Monday night.
Len, and then Jennifer.
Yeah. I mean, so all of that sounds perfectly reasonable, but the, you know, the, the number itself is pretty eye-popping. You know, we went a year ago to town meeting and said, oh, we need this addition, it's only going to be 3.5 million dollars, and now it's going to be 4.7 million dollars. So not on us, but, you know, that, that type of thing hurts our credibility. And, and so we shouldn't, I mean, I'm sure nobody intentionally underestimated that original estimate, but it's just unfortunate that it's such a large jump.
Jennifer.
Oh, I just have a question. What is the final decision for the cafeteria space? What is, what are we doing?
I think that the, I think that the decision.
Good. I mean, there are so many ideas bouncing around, yeah, so.
Right. It appears that what makes the most sense would be fine, is just to keep that one room and not go across the hall.
Not go across the hall.
Not go across the hall, but to take out the stage.
Okay.
And that, you know, plotting out the number of tables that we could get in there.
That's big enough? Okay.
That's been the, that's been the decision, to go that direction.
So the 175 is take out the stage. That's the price to take out the stage. Okay.
There's one other aspect, and I'm not sure exactly how it's coming out. To do it correctly, we have an effect on the stairwell, the stairs too. I don't know.
I think that, that we're not doing that.
We're not doing it.
We're not. That was, that was an idea that was.
That was an idea. Your reps are right. It was, an idea originally was to go into the stairwell to get more space. But that stairwell is used all day long, and so it would be, otherwise, you're going to the far ends of the building for, for mobility up the floors. So no, it's, it's within this, it's within the existing space. And after the architects have looked at it, and, and Ms. D. Francisco, and I think, I think Permanent Town Building has had a chance to look at that, or maybe, am I wrong on that?
John.
I don't think we've.
I don't think it's been.
Sort of talked.
We've talked about it. That's why I was still a little confused about the stairwell, because when the stairwell part came back, that was going to be the hardest and the biggest part to do.
The design isn't finished yet, so that's, right now, that's still an estimate. It wasn't able to be bid with the rest of it, because the design isn't done.
So it's going to be an, an addition to the bid. So anyway.
Kirsty, you have a question?
Yeah. I guess it's a question, so going back to what Len said about it being bad to be off by so much. I'm trying to figure, so who's been driving the estimates and everything? I mean, has it been Permanent Town Building Committee, or has it been us with help from, you know, it's, who's off?
So, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm, no, that's.
I thought you were asking me.
Yeah, I am, I'm.
From what I understand, that the original estimates were done, like, not this past fall, but the fall before, before architects, OPM were, were on board. And that's really who's been driving it since then, saying, this is, this is what we're missing, this is, this is why the estimate is wrong, you know, is, is, is low. To do the, to do these other pieces and do it right. And that's where, that's who's been driving, oh, you don't have enough square footage in your original estimate, the square footage is, is poor. So as far as who's reviewing it, it's the PTBC. As far as where it's coming from, it's the architect through the team.
I meant, who dropped the ball on the first estimate?
I wouldn't say there was any dropping ball. It was really based on the construction numbers of the time. In fact, two different groups did it. There was, we wanted a verification on the number. And, and based on the verification, the number actually went up. I think one of the things that was, was a learning experience in this, and to some extent with Thompson, though. The, when you get small projects like this, and this is considered small in the world of architecture. I, I think that the general rules, this is what we're finding, the general rules on per square foot really don't apply, because there's so many other things you need to take into consideration. And so it was a learning experience on that. But, but we even had, you know, one of our, one of our contractors do an estimate on it. And they came, the architectural firm, and they, and the contractor came very close to each other. So I don't think, there was a lot of due diligence in trying to get the right number. It's just that when you actually go out, so it's, it's a lesson in, in when you do these. Fortunately, I don't see any small projects ahead. All I see is big ones. So, you know, it might be just a different rule, but. And then there was some talk, and I don't think we've done too much with it, is knowing that Hardy is going to need X, Y, and Z in the year, should we actually put it in right now? And there's a little bit of that in this as well. I couldn't tell you the exact number of dollars with it. But rather than go back to capital or go back later, let's just do it now when we're under construction. So, so that is another thing that plays into this as well.
Thanks, one more question.
Jennifer.
Is the funding for the fence in this, or is it, has it not been funded yet?
It's not in this, no.
It's not in this.
It would be part of the playground.
It'll be part of the playground, the Chandler Street side, the fence in the Lake Street side will be wrapped up in there?
If the, if the new fences went in, it would be a part of that project. It's not in this project.
Okay. So we're not doing it this summer, the fence?
I don't know for sure. I'd have to, to look into this.
The plan is to do the Lake Street playground this summer.
But right now, there's this really horrible, ugly.
Tarp, the tarp on the fence.
Yes. Community members are very upset about, so.
Well, let me, we can look into whether, how essential the tarp is. I, I think that was put up there for more screening purposes.
It was put up there because balls were going into the, into Lake Street, so that we need something.
Originally wanted to put up a netting above the fence, but it was going to be too expensive to do that. But yes, the, there was the issue of that, but there was also a little bit of screening. But the fence, the, the way they put the tarps on gives you a little bit more height. That is true. A little bit, not much. So I think that we can take a look at that issue.
All right. You know, the alternative.
The alternative, okay.
Structures.
The alternative structured learning. We've had actually a fair amount of discussion.
I did say.
Sorry.
I did say that when, yeah, when Anna Watson comes, we would take her, take, take.
Absolutely.
A little bit out of order, because we have, yes. Thank you, Anna, for your patience. So you want to come up to the microphone, and Jennifer, what, you want to talk about what we're doing?
Sure. So last spring, town meeting established the, a brand-new Rainbow Commission, and Arlington's sort of on the vanguard of this, a few other towns have it. But we are working on it. It's a commission that is devoted to LGBTQ plus issues in town. Its mission is yet undecided. That's what the new commission will do. I was on the committee that looked over the various applicants to figure out who would be the school committee representative, because we have one representative. Rather than do separate interviews, we thought we'd do them all together. There was actually a big question of who our school committee person would be. Anna Watson is a fabulous choice, although she no longer has kids in the school system. She has been intricately involved for many, many years, since the mid-'90s, in stuff that happens in the school, including establishing a, one of the not very common middle-school-level gay straight alliance. And now in the Curumistic, which is a organization devoted to youth issues, for LGBTQ plus issues. And she's just been such an amazing force in this town, and I think she'd be a great school committee representative to the committee.
So we're going to take a vote, but you want to talk a little bit for a minute about yourself and how you got.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for, for having me here. Yeah, the, the Rainbow Commission came about because we had the opportunity in this town, this forward-thinking town, to actually establish a town commission where this large population is given priority and thought about how to make our town even more welcoming. It's, it's funny, I was just reading, I got, you know how you get in the mail, the things about selling your house? And it had a whole thing about Arlington, and I was like.
This one?
Next year, exactly, that one. I was just looking at it. And I said, next year, we're going to say, we are one of the few towns in the nation that, and that, and that's true, because we did a whole study around these kinds of commissions. Usually, it's just rolled into the Human Rights Commission. But the difference is that this is more about networking, about social opportunities, about connecting intergenerationally, about making sure that we have resources for our children of LGBTQ plus families. A lot of people, you all know, because it's, you know, Arlington is, is given such high ratings in terms of the schools, a lot of people move here. And so those families also have particular needs. So it's just a, a way that our town is going to be able to support populations throughout, you know, all age, all ages. So it's really exciting, and I'm just thrilled. And then, yeah, I've just been sort of working with this population for, for some time, in particular, youth. And I, I, I did really enjoy helping get that, they call it a queer straight alliance now at the middle school. And at the time, it was really one of the first in the area. So, you know, with the Rainbow Commission, Arlington again is taking this step, sort of in the vanguard, I guess, of, of, you know, support and equity and social justice, so.
Any questions for Anna? All right, we'll take a vote. Motion by Dr. Seuss.
I give a motion, yes.
Second by Cindy Starks. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it, unanimous. Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so go get them.
Will do. And, and do I, what, what is our relationship? We, we, we just, do I come to meeting? We'll figure it out?
Yeah, well, you know, I, well, I think from time to time, it would be good for the committee to get a report.
Yeah.
Yeah, on, on what's happening and where we can plug in.
Yep.
So that's really important. I would say, from time to time, I think that's the best way to do it. Jennifer, was that what you would say?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the relationship is sort of informal, but, you know, but if there's issues, you reach out to us. If we hear something, we reach out to you.
Okay.
Yeah, a report would be great. We, we haven't always done that, but that's a nice.
I forgot to mention the Rainbow Alliance, which is a pilot program funded by the Arlington Education Foundation at Bracket. The kids in the QSA at the middle school, and this is why it's so great to get, you know, these kinds of, these kinds of clubs and whatnot going. They had said, this kind of bullying starts in the elementary school. We would like to go talk to those kids. So we came up with the idea of having a Rainbow Alliance. It's kind of a pre-age, pre-GSA, age-appropriate for kids in elementary schools. And we're hoping that by the end of this year, we'll have a pilot that, I heard you talking about all the other elementary schools, that this pilot can go into the elementary schools, all, all the public elementary schools. It's very unusual to have this, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Now, we're going to talk about alternative structures.
Well, I don't have a specific proposal tonight, but I'm going to give you an update where we are on this. We've had a lot of discussion about it, and actually, I think that it's not, in terms of getting a rigorous assignment for students that would, could be done instead of being in school for the day, is, is achievable, and achievable fairly soon. Where we are at the secondary level, and this is both, both Addison and the high school, is that it probably. is that it probably would not be in this year, a project per se. It would really be down to individual classes. So it would be an assignment from the classes. And as the principals have said, this would be easy, because in the high school, virtually every teacher uses Google Classroom. And pretty much the same at the middle school, I think. So that piece for secondary is not going to be an issue. And that can even be done relative to the particular unit. Or it could be something supplemental to that unit that they would give and give a timeline. It would probably give them a couple of weeks. That, it's certainly not going to be the day after, and we put guidelines in the proposal for that. At the elementary level, we discussed it this week, discussed it with curriculum leaders, we discussed it with elementary principals. And what we've decided is, it makes sense to have the same assignment for all grade one students across the district, all grade two and so forth. And so that's something that we'll be working on. And what I'd like to do is, when we have those done, is if the Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee would want to meet, we could vet it there. Because I don't think we should be vetting it at the table, not that people couldn't come and listen. And we would have those available as a pilot for this year. There's another aspect to it as well, that this is a change in working conditions. So this is something we have to work on, and we're talking with the union about that, what it's going to, there's just a lot of details with it. So we'll be working on that as well. At this point, we've got two days before we hit that next weekend. And so hopefully, we won't need to do that, and we may not even put it in place. But the thinking that goes on this right now will put us in good stead for next year. And over the summer, we can do a little bit more. In fact, I'm going to talk about Learn Launch in a minute, but when Mr. McNeil and I were at Learn Launch Conference last week, we met with our data specialists, actually, digital learning specialists for the district. And they had some great ideas that we could do in the way of PD for teachers in compensation for the time. But anyway, we're going to work on that. But nothing like that could happen right now. It's going to take the summertime to put some of those together. But they were very enthusiastic about it. So we'll be back in touch with you about that.
Can I ask when we're going to reach out to parents about this? Because they'd be the ones who are really driving it at home. And I'd like, before we start doing something like this, I'd like to be sure that a good majority of them prefer this to having extra days in June, or what the challenges they may face. Or, you know, I think we should get some input from parents before rolling this out. You know, kind of surprise.
Well, I don't disagree. We have to, right now, it's probably not at the stage where we reach out. I think the parents probably have to go through a one-time try on it and see what they think. I'm not proposing that we're going to have something like this every single snow day. But at the same time, when we get toward that last week in June, I don't think any parent wants their student, their children to be in school that week. And buildings get so hot. I think that if we have a quality assignment, the learning that can go on in March and April outside of school is preferable to that. And it's also consistent with what our district goals are. We have been talking about personalized education, teach, students being able to do something of interest to them. We've been talking about doing more independence, fostering independence. So I think this would be an interesting thing to try, and then get feedback and see how it goes. But we're not quite there yet to communicate it, because it would be very vague. And I think anybody would say, well, tell me more detail before I tell you whether I think this is a good idea or not.
So I, I'm confused. Is this, are we definitely piloting this? Suppose we get one more day, snow day, so it doesn't turn the corner, right? Because that's always the worry, is when it goes, you know, the last day of school is on a Monday of the, you know, right? So we just get one more snow day. Would we be piloting, potentially piloting this then? Or are we only piloting it if we have enough snow days that it does something like turn the corner?
We would have to do it, well, there's a whole level of uncertainty, this whole issue of snow days. What if we get another blizzard of 78, you know?
I'm just curious, is it, is this a, something that we may not be piloting this year?
It may not be piloting it.
Because, but even if we just get one more day, we may not pilot it, because it's just?
Yes, it depends where we are in the approval process. Because we need to, we need to identify what the assignments are. We have to work out the details with the union, the unions. We have to go meet with the curriculum instruction. So we may be down the road several weeks. And so we could have a snow day between now and then, in which case, it's just going to be a snow day.
So I would say, if we, in terms of the communication to parents and the community, that we make it very clear that it, we, it's an unfinished project, that we are trying a few things out, and that we are looking for their feedback of what worked and what didn't work. We're looking for feedback from teachers, from parents, from kids. You know, if we were to do this, that it is not, now we have a new program set. You know, that's very, very clear to everybody, that we are in flux and still trying to figure out what works.
It just feels premature right now to do it. I'd like to get more specificity about this. And that would, and I'd want to present it to Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee first, and then we can do something like that. So there's still a process in here, and I'm looking at it as a pilot. This may not be what we want to do, we'll see.
To me, the impact in this is whether we have an extra day or not at the end of the year. If we have a snow day, the children are staying home. If we have this program, the children are still staying home. The major difference is, the children will not be going to a school an extra day in the year if we embrace this program. I do think it's important to have input from the parents, but I think the parents need to hear that if we don't have this program, it doesn't mean the kids are coming to school that day. It's a snow day, no matter what, the children will not be here.
Kirsty, then Cindy, or?
Well, Cindy.
Cindy, thank you, go ahead, Cindy.
I also think it's important to understand that, as I was reading through some of the materials, that, you know, a snow day is a day that teachers don't work.
Oh, yeah.
Because we add it on to the end. So it is not expected in any way, shape, or form, that this adds to a teacher's duties or anything that a teacher is going to do on a snow day, right? Unless they're getting paid more for doing this, right?
That's what we're, that's what we're going to be talking about.
Right.
That's what I mean, that's a detail that we really have to be on the same page.
Yeah, some of the ones, the one that I was reading, now probably it's a private school, but students, teachers were expected to be online and interacting with students in this snow day. That's, I'm sorry, that's BS.
They get the day off at the end, and they don't have to work the extra day at the end. The day is not added at the end.
Right, if that's true, then.
That goes to negotiation, you've got to be careful.
All right, so I think we're getting, you know, a little far from the, yeah, go ahead.
So what I'd say to what Mr. Hayner said is that, yes, you wouldn't have that day at the end, but you've now taken a snow day when you're just mainly, as a parent, trying to make sure that your kids are out playing in the snow, coming in, getting food or whatever, to something where you're having to make sure that they're doing whatever it is they're supposed to be doing. And maybe you're there, maybe you're trying to work from home, maybe you don't have.
But that's the issue with this, not to be doing the next day.
No. It's spread. You still put a job onto the parent's plate.
Yep, you do.
To do. And I think we should be talking to parents before we be putting plate, jobs on their plates and make sure. Yeah, but you said that it was just, oh, it's just changed this to that.
You didn't hear what I said.
I did hear what you said.
I wanted to make it clear that the children would not be, they would be home either way.
So I mean, I think the next steps here are, the curriculum committee's going to vet this, and then there needs to be dialogue with parents to see if this is something that works. And it may not be practical to pilot it in FY18 this school year.
We may not get any more snow days, and that would be just terrific.
Well, that would be great, yeah, okay. I mean, we're getting, I mean, because school committee, the last, we don't have a meeting until February 27th. So for us to take a vote, I mean, it doesn't seem like.
We're not ready.
No, March first.
March first.
March first.
I mean, March first.
February 29th.
Whatever it is, whatever the, so March first, we don't have a meeting for a while. And by then, the snow day season can be well over. So we're talking about a pilot.
Yeah, but we might be into June 30th too, so.
Okay, all right. So, that it?
One last thing, and that is, last, last week, there was the Learn Launch Conference, and I was asked to speak at it on a panel. Arlington was invited to participate in this panel because of the work we've been doing in technology and personalized learning. But Learn Launch was the group that piloted with Department of Education, the MAPLE consortium that we belong to. But Learn, it's a very interesting conference, because it's a unique one for educators, because it brings educators, entrepreneurs, educational researchers, vendors, students to a conference where there's a lot of discussion about how we do more innova, how we do more innovation to transform learning. And usually, the vehicle for that is technology. So I spoke on a panel with Superintendent Beverly, Bedford, Millis, and Arlington, talking about the various things that we're doing in our, in our district, in this area, and also what are some of the obstacles that we're encountering. But we brought a small team there, and next year, we would like to have our students present, because there's a lot of great things that they're doing. We, on Friday was very, probably one of the most interesting of the two days, is seeing the different students presenting the different things that they're doing that are innovative, and almost without exception, use technology to be innovative. So we're doing that, and so next year, we're hoping to present as well in that. But anyways, it was a terrific conference. And we could talk more about what we're doing as, in March sometime. And last thing is, there's a farewell concert at the high school for the group that's leaving, that's going to Italy. I wish I was going with them. But they're going to have a wonderful time, but I've been watching the weather. I think it's going to be fine. But it's at seven o'clock at the, at the high school, and I'm sure it'll be terrific. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 18155, dated 1/25/18, in the amount of $745,063.19. Approval of minutes, school committee regular meeting, January 11th, 2018, and January 25th, 2018. Approval of trips, HS Nagayoka Kayo.
Naga Okakil.
Naga Okako, I don't know. City, Japan, July 3rd, 2018, July 15th, 2018. Approval of trips, U Penn, I got that one pronounced right. Model Congress Conference, 2018, March 22, 25, 2018. Motion by Mr. Hayner, second by Mr. Schlickman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Subcommittee and liaison reports and announcements. Budget.
Budget, you've heard about the budget, and we will meet again on the 15th of February. Subcommittee.
There's no school committee meeting that night, there's a confusion about it.
There is some confusion.
Yeah.
She's making us work.
Yeah, good.
Brutal.
Committee relations.
Nothing to report, no meetings at this time.
District accountability.
No meetings at this time, however, Superintendent informs me that she'll have an alternative learning project proposal ready for us to talk about, we scheduled.
Very good. Facilities.
No, nothing to report.
Policies and procedures.
Nothing to report.
Yeah, go ahead.
For facilities?
Oh, sorry.
Could we learn more about the lock that was spoken about at public participation?
Sorry, the what?
There was.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, I will look into it.
Thank you.
Lynn?
The Bishop Lock after school.
Nothing to report.
School Norman Task Force really no longer exists. School Legal Services.
Not yet this time.
Okay, Building Committee, we've talked about that. Anybody have any questions? March 1st, we have a big meeting. Gibbs Committee, Cindy, any report? We've kind of talked about that.
Nope, I haven't had any.
Liaison, anybody want to mention anything?
Do we want to talk more about the long-range planning meeting?
Sure.
So we've heard most of the update, the long-range planning meeting. It was favorable in the sense that, you know, it was questionable as to whether we were going to get the additional Chapter 70 money, but that became the consensus. And also, not just the fixed number, but also if Ways and Mean goes higher, which it often does, we'll get the higher amount. So that was good news. We also talked about the override, the need for an operating override. There were some scenarios discussed. There was a lot of discussion about whether that should be paired with the debt exclusion, which a lot of people think it should. And that would be, you know, 18 months from now. So that's coming up pretty quickly. We need to make sure. There was talk about, you know, sort of reopening the discussion of what the correct funding should the schools, what the correct funding for the schools should be. They are open to that. We're not going to, they're not going to require us to stick to the formulas, which is good. But that requires a lot of work on our side to come up with a vision and a plan, preferably a multi-year plan, to show where we want to spend and why. So it's going to take a lot of work, but we'll, we'll start that work as a budget subcommittee.
Okay, and how are we going to start that work? Do you have a?
John's going to be very busy.
Through the budget.
John's going to be busy.
John's, you're not going to have a lot of years.
So one thing we're going to start is just by trying to populate the diagram that I was talking about, where we're trying to take what the principals are suggesting they want to see as their three-year plan. I mean, in this case, I'm talking about the elementary school principals. What they want to see is their three-year plan and compare it to, look at that, what is that in terms of staffing? And then, where are we now? And, and so that would highlight what we don't have. And then try and do something like that for the middle school and, you know, all the other secondary schools. But this will become, first, this can become part of the budget book. As we go forward, it can be information that's provided as part of the budget book. And as Lynn says, we need to start thinking soon, because we're going to have an opportunity to revisit what we think the staff, what we think the shape of the school, both staffing and whatever other resources, what we think we need, and to present it as a whole, not within the formula that we have now, but to present it as a whole. And then I expect there'll be some back and forth, but at least we have a chance to present this.
Okay, so I mean, just in terms of timing, it's really, that's something, you need to be pretty clear by December this year, maybe January or later, so that you can start to have the override discussion.
Yeah.
So we're talking about this calendar year?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe at the halfway point of next school year, there's sort of a deadline for this project. So I think we just need to think about the process by which we're going to do this.
Yep.
Okay.
So there's also discussion of doing sort of a budget presentation to the town, not necessarily run by us, but obviously, Mr. Janis is going to be very busy and involved in that as well. But I encourage people, if anyone, if there's things about the budget that you don't understand, that you wish you knew more about, to send those ideas to us, as we help craft what that presentation's going to look like. You know, we can sort of.
Okay. All right, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So in this budget presentation to town meeting, we've been very limited in terms of time.
Yep.
Is the proposal to change that?
I think that's conversation, no, this is about specifically a, something that would be primarily directed at town meeting members, but open to the entire community, to, like, an hour or two, to really talk about budget issues in the town overall. Where does the money come from? Where's it go to? How's it get allocated? How's the decisions get made? You know, just stuff that some people in town know really well, but most people don't, don't know.
So this isn't a budget presentation on the part of the school department, but rather a general discussion at town meeting and?
To be, a forum, to.
A forum?
Forum.
Not town meeting, but a forum.
One of the people who it's going to be directed at are town meeting members, but it's a forum open to the entire community.
All right. Any other liaison reports?
So I'll just report on the chat that Paul and I had.
Oh, yeah.
On Saturday.
I apologize to you, I wrote in response to your email, and I thought I sent it.
Oh, that's right.
But I'll resend it.
So there might be a supplement to this, because there were so many people that we both had, we had to divide and conquer at one point.
So everyone worked.
The publicity, the publicity worked.
Oh, that's great.
So I did include a report, there might be a supplement to it, but just to run down, we had one Hardy parent, we had apparently another issue this year with specialty, special ed services not being delivered at the beginning of the year. ed services not being delivered at the beginning of the year, compensatory services still haven't really been delivered yet. We had a group of bishop parents that I alluded to earlier, that were very concerned about their high class sizes, and then they're not getting attention when the kindergartens were getting attention. We had a Pierce parent who had some issues with bullying in the very early grades, and was interested in resources to address that. There was a general discussion, and I think maybe Community Relations can consider putting some more information on the website about how people should communicate with the school committee and how to get something on the agenda. And the selectmen have a very formal process for how something gets on their agenda, but maybe some more information about the process for doing that. There were two parentless discussions that I told people I would mention, that as if they came to the chat. One was a, a big discussion about recess, outdoor recess and cold weather. People were concerned that, that kids weren't going out, even though it was twenty-five degrees, and they wanted a more uniform standard. And there was also lots of discussion about kids not washing, not having the chance to be able to wash their hands before lunch and snack. Obviously, there are logistical issues, but with the flu season and all that, there was a lot of concern about that. So that's the report, thank you.
And you guys were at Cafe Nero this time, or?
You were, you were at Nero. Yeah, I talked to a couple of parents. We had one who was questioning how we actually do registration for the pre-K program. And I passed the email on to the superintendent for clarification. I apologize for being confused on that myself, because I'm in the middle of rewriting the Lowell policy, so I, you know, I get confused.
I think we're, anyway, I can talk to you, but I think we need to take a look at that.
Yeah, the language was a little confusing, it was a second language parent. So I think, you know, so just wanted to get some clarity back to her. Another one was a Pierce parent who has a fifth grader, and, who's very, very interested in the Gibbs Project. And they were asking a lot of questions, what about transportation, what will it look like? But the young man was very interested into the construction. He asked somehow, can, can he come see the plan, the building plans? And, you know, because I think we've got a construction geek budding. And, I don't know, as a central office person myself, anytime that I have a kid who's really interested in what I'm doing, which is rare, it's a beautiful thing.
His mother wrote me, so I'm looking to see what I can, you know, can get. I'm sure I have something.
Give him a hard hand, let him figure it out.
Yeah, I mean, this might be an opportunity to get down to the fifth grades and do a presentation as well. Look what we're doing, and show them pictures of the construction, where their classroom's going to be. It could be really fun.
All right.
I was just going to say, Ms. DeFrancisco has now made the rounds of all the fifth grade classes. They're all, they've been talking about, so the fifth grade kids are getting excited, and this may be...
That may have been the precipitating factor, but wow, just really, a lot of ques, and she was a little concerned about staffing, how it was going to work. And I explained to her, we're taking the sixth grade and moving them, so we weren't hiring a whole bunch of new teachers. You know, this is, this is uncharted territory, people haven't experienced this, so I'm sure we're going to get a lot more questions between now and then.
Been challenging.
Just one point, Cafe Nero seems to be the place where we draw more people.
Oh, really? Interesting.
Yeah, than Whole Foods.
Yeah, so we've already published, though, for this year, where we're meeting.
I know.
I know, okay.
But I think also, just, and thank you so much, Len, for like, your, like, prod doing, what kind of, what kind of publicity are we doing?
All right, we could change the next thing we want, okay, go ahead, yeah.
I just wanted to say, I've seen some of the discussion about the recess thing, and I think it's important, as it comes up, you need to be asking, is the problem happening